So it's bright and early. And that is going to be to approve the RFQ for this sports complex. It'll be going out to the design firms. Because of Thanksgiving week, we've got to figure out some way to try to make it work timing wise. So we're not really jammed for time. So that's the plan. And I do appreciate the Gazette working with us on the publication. So make sure you pass that along to your coworkers. We appreciate that. And then that will turn over to Linda.
Okay. Dick Trail, would you come forward, please?
I can do that. Where do you want me? Anywhere, huh?
I want to tell you how much we appreciate all that you've done for this community. And it's with sincere appreciation for the excellent dedicated service as a member of the Airport Advisory Board. And I'd like to give you this plaque. You have served from August 2013 to September 2024. Many, many years.
Yeah. I also sat over here.
And if you've served on the council, all the things you've done. So thank you, Dick.
Well.
We appreciate what you've done.
It's been a pleasure, and I thank you for doing this.
Well, we appreciate you too. Okay.
Put that there, how's that?
I have another one. And this one goes to Dale Doolin. And Dale, we want you to know, I'm coming down. I'm here too. I want you to know how much we have appreciated all you have done. Now Dale has done an excellent job of serving as a member of the McCook Planning Commission. You know how long you've done this?
A long time.
Would you like to tell everybody?
Should go right ahead.
Okay, October of 1997, he started on the planning commission. And so we would like to thank him for all he has done for the city of McCook by serving on the planning commission. An excellent job. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, that's a lot of years, but it went by fast. Very enjoyable. A lot of decisions. And it's pretty exciting to see McCook moving forward now. And this planning commission that's succeeding is going to be making some important decisions. And if they get off track a little bit, I'll show up.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the voluntary annexation of a tract of land located in the northwest corner, quarter of section 19, township three, North Range, 29, west of the 6PM, Redwill County, Nebraska.
Attorney to act as the hearing officer.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
Just a minute. Well, I missed all of that. Who made that?
Chair.
In a second.
And I second you.
Okay.
For some reason, I have a new member on the planning commission. Or Lance Gillen is on your board somehow, so I need to get that thing. So that's, I apologize.
I vote Cass J., no votes Cass Nay.
Thanks, Mary. There are seven exhibits being offered for this hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report. That's two pages. Exhibit number two is a notice of hearing. That's one page. Exhibit number three is a warranty deed description, one page. Exhibit number four, McCook Planning Commission meeting minutes dated October 14, 2024. That's three pages. Exhibit number five, McCook Planning Commission Resolution, number PC 2024-02. That's two pages. Exhibit number six, ordinance number 2024-3094. That's two pages. Exhibit number seven is the annexation plat map. That's one page. I'll accept exhibits one through seven into evidence. Take comments from city staff before opening up to public comment.
Thanks, Daniel. As we've discussed at prior council meetings, I guess it was a prior council meeting. The city of McCook closed on the property on the northwest side of town that is going to be dedicated to multi-use purposes. That occurred on October 2nd. We talk about multi-use purposes, kind of what we're looking at right now. Not only recreational to go along with the ballot question that was approved by the voters in November of 2022, but we're also looking at move forward with commercial and residential development that's going to tie into the recreational development project. So it's a very exciting time, but as part of that process, we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we go about financing this? And how do we make sure that we've got everything kosher? So we're ready to move forward with the ballpark project. So tonight, we've got two separate public hearings. Each one of them kind of answered the question, okay, how do we proceed from here? So the first public hearing deals with voluntary annexation of the property. Since the city owns the property, we have the ability to annex it voluntarily without having to jump through the hoops that you see with the annexations that don't have that voluntary element to it. We've done a few voluntary annexations here recently. I think industrial park property that the EDC is developing, that was a voluntary annexation. We've also voluntarily annexed property up at North Point. I'm sure there are probably some others that are missing right now as well, too. But this process is a little simpler and a little easier. We just have to bring this to the council for the council's approval. And it will be done on first reading. We're going to ask for suspension of the rules. The reason why we're asking for suspension of the rules is because there is a municipal infrastructure aid program grant that we're going to be applying for. And one of the conditions of that is if the property is annexed in. We will be talking about that in a little bit more detail here in the next agenda item. But for now, we'll just kind of focus on the voluntary annexation. And I don't know if there are any questions regarding the property. We've talked about it quite a bit. But it's that property north of Q Street, West Q Street, east of Highway 83 on the backside of Typhus Machinery, Barnett's, and Sam Lloyd's in Nebraska Public Power District. And there are a couple of empty lots over there as well, too. But that's the property that we're asking the council to annex.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? Hearing now, I recommend we reconvene.
I move to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene as the city council.
Second.
Is there any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
Look at these lights.
You want to do the lights?
Yep. I vote Cass J. There you go. Vote Cass J., no votes Cass Nay.
Ancient technology is really bad.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-394, approving the voluntary annexation of a tract of land located in the northwest corner section of section 19, township three, North Range, 29, west of the 6PM, Redwill County, Nebraska. I introduce ordinance number 2024-394 by title, and I ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits in the city of McCook, county of Redwill, of state of Nebraska by annexing there to a certain tract of land in two years to and not embraced within the present limits of the city of McCook, Nebraska. Refilling all ordinances in conflict here with and providing a time and date from and after which this ordinance can be enforced.
You want it? Ordinance number 2024-394 has been introduced, read by title, and moved statutory rule requiring readings on three different days be suspended.
I'll second that.
The electronic should.
Back.
It's back, it's back.
We're back.
We're back. I vote Cass J., no votes Cass Nay.
I move for final passage of ordinance number 2024-394.
I second.
Any discussion anymore? Okay. All votes in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote Cass J., no votes Cass Nay.
Ordinance number 2024-394 is declared lawfully passed and adopted upon publication as required by law. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the adoption of a redevelopment plan entitled Redevelopment Plan for the Walters Multi-Use Redevelopment Project for the land located in the northwest quarter of section 19, township three, North Range, 29, west of the 6PM, Redwill County, Nebraska.
I so move and ask the city attorney to act as the hearing officer.
I'll second that.
Any discussion anymore? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay.
I vote Cass J., no votes Cass Nay.
There are six exhibits being offered for this hearing. Exhibit number one is the city manager's report, two pages. Exhibit number two is a notice of public hearing. One page. Exhibit number three is the planning commission resolution, number PC 2024-03, one page. Exhibit four is Miller and Associates draft of the 2024 Redevelopment Plan for the Walters Multi-Use Redevelopment Project. That's 69 pages. Exhibit number five is McCook Planning Commission meeting minutes dated October 4, 2024. That's three pages. Exhibit six is McCook City Council Resolution, number 2024-28. That's one page. I'll accept exhibits one through six into evidence. Take comments from city staff. And we have Miller and Associates here with us tonight. Take comment from them, then open it up to the public. Nate?
Yeah, I'd like Craig Bennett, Jason Combs. And we appreciate them being here tonight. They've actually been moving at warp speed trying to get the redevelopment plan completed. I think it's probably about a month and a half ago, two months ago, I can't remember what it was. We started our conversations with Craig and Jason. Saying, hey, you know, we're kind of interested in this MYAP grant. What are the conditions perceived to the application being submitted? And one of them was the creation of a redevelopment plan. The second one was a voluntary annexation of the property that we just did. Well, one of them was a little bit easier than the other. The redevelopment plan took a little bit more time, and I appreciate the expedited timeframe that Craig and Jason were working under to try to get this over to us. To MYAP grant, it provides us with the opportunity to apply for infrastructure, for money grant to help with the infrastructure development out at the Walters property. And in particular, you know, we could use it for street, water, sewer. Those are the things that we're kind of looking at right now. But we didn't want to lose out on that opportunity, so we really did have to kind of speed this process up. We took this to the planning commission this past week, as well as the voluntary annexation. The planning commission had a chance to kind of go through the initial draft. Since that time, there have been some updates that have been made, so you've got the final draft of redevelopment plan. And with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Craig and Jason. We'll let them kind of take control of the plan.
All right, well, thank you. We're not going to go through the entire plan page by page tonight, so that's not going to happen. But we've tried to condense, since this is a very condensed time period in which we create a redevelopment plan for 127 acres, there's a lot of opportunity to go into this parcel. And so we're going to try and summarize those opportunities as best we can tonight. So I will just kind of walk you through on the screens what the screens are. The presentation will be a little bit different than your handout or your, the actual redevelopment plan. So tonight, we'll kind of look at the overview, the infrastructure that's required for this parcel, the residential opportunities for development, commercial opportunities, the sports complex component of this particular parcel. We'll also look at the economic impact, the fundings, the timeline, and then obviously the discussion that we might have. So over the last several years, the city of McCook has considered a sports complex, and we know that it has been looked at as an opportunity for the community to aid and assist. And when Nate came to us and said, these are the opportunities we want to look at, we directly were able to collate that with our comprehensive plan that we as a firm are working on as well. Many things that this particular parcel pointed to came out of the comprehensive plan as people looked at areas that could be targeted for a recreational component, residential components, and commercial. And so what was nice about this parcel and the timing is that we were able to utilize this redevelopment plan for this parcel. We're also able to tie into our comprehensive plan as well. There was public input that came from our future land use workshop session number three that we had that also pointed to this parcel. We're going to take a look tonight just a little bit about infrastructure. So the thing that really excites me, maybe doesn't excite a lot of other people about putting pipe in the ground and things like that, but... So anyway, this parcel we have been looking at, I've personally been looking at for McCook for many years, and we'll kind of go through some of those figures. The 127 acre parcel you see on the screen is identified by the red line that you have out there. It was platted right away. That consists of R Street, S Street, T Street, U Street along the west side. It also consists of 16th Street running north-south. That runs along the west side of our property, running north-south as well. These many people may not even know are platted streets. The right of way is already dedicated to the city, but it's being developed and used and utilized by people. Even these lots here, they all have, these blocks have platted street right of way to access 83. And so over the past several decades, if I can say it that long, when we've looked at it as a firm, we know that this parcel has had lots of opportunity should these streets need to be extended. And so we'll kind of walk through what this redevelopment plan has and how it exists. One of the things that I want to show, first of all, is a little 3D perspective just to kind of exaggerate the east side of the property here, the red line being that same boundary that we were talking at. But you can see that the terrain kind of changes and drops down over the east and north side as we kind of take a look, looking southwesterly. We were looking north-westly there, looking southwesterly. So the yellow line over here is the highway, and this is Q Street. Again, we can see some of the terrain that falls off here on the north and east side. But the brown colored area is the flat area, which is unique in terms of when we look at most of development sites, we want parcels that have relief in it, at least from a drainage standpoint. Where are we going to convey our stormwater? How are we going to get sanitary sewer? And this really has had our eye on this parcel for a long time in terms of it has so many components that allow us to have infrastructure. I will say, too, at the bottom of this draw, along this side here, which is on the northeast-erly side, and we're looking southwest is where sanitary sewer exists. There's a trunk main that was built, ten inch sewer that was already built out there and was also stepped along the west side of our property into our property. So, you know, as we've seen some awards given to planning commission members that had a long-term presence and city council members, there's been credit that should be given to putting that infrastructure because we couldn't be at this place if that infrastructure wasn't already in place. One of the view that we're looking at here is when we look at what would be looking southeasterly on the site, there is a drop off that also happens in the rainy west corner. This actually happened to be an aerial photo from Gooler that happened to show some of the drainages that would be worked on and conveyed incorrectly there in that area. But we're going to talk about some of these drainage areas here that relates to the development, and we'll use them as amenities as opposed to something that makes it difficult to develop. So one of our components when we looked at in terms of this redevelopment area is how would this land conceptually be used? And so we came up with, as we do in a comprehensive plan, a future land use map, meaning not necessarily zoning, but what would the use types be and how would we utilize that? So I'll just kind of walk through this parcel here. As we look at the blue area in the middle, that seems to be the cornerstone of what we're looking at, not really in the corner, but in the heart of this particular property. This blue area as shown today here represents about 30 acres, a little over 30 acre parcel. And the red boxes that you see on the south side of the property along Q Street and then along the west side over here would also be commercial as we see it being developed. Along the south side of the sports complex lot, we have designated an area in an orange color which could be multifamily residential. And then along the exterior part of that, we have a ring road that would encapsulate this parcel and have single-family residential homes that would be on both sides of the road. And if you remember when I was talking about in the previous aerial images there that there was property that drops off to the east, property that drops off to the north, I kind of highlighted that with a dashed line here where that flat area would be. These would be the areas that we would typically have for homes that would be the footprint of the homes with what in most developments we have the desire to have walkout basements. And so these would have a road that would have the home developed on the flat side of it with walkout basements to the east. As we navigate around the north side of the property, we'd have the same option or availability with these lots here. And then this cul-de-sac that we have in the northwest corner would be a primarily flat area, although we'd have an open green space here. The last cul-de-sac that we have here utilizes that existing terrain, which is kind of the ridge of that existing canyon that you see with the draw on both sides, but allowing lots to spray off of both sides, which have opportunity to, to have some of that backyard to leave walkout basements. So it gives us a mix of size of lots. It gives us a mix of density of lots. And one of the things that came out of our comprehensive plan over and over again is what do we have available for housing within McCook? We have a need for housing. Where can we have housing at? Job creation, job enhancement is about how do we move people into McCook? And so housing is a component of this 127 acres, both from a single family and these orange lots here, which will be multifamily. As we looked at the blue lot that's in the middle on the sports complex, the red boxes that you see out here would have great opportunity for commercial. They would serve as transitional zoning, particularly as you look at the highway corridor next to the residential and next to the sports complex. But if you look as complimentary uses, maybe they would be a motel, maybe they'd be some commercial, maybe they'd be some offices, maybe they'd be some retail. And those would be those types of things that you would buffer Q Street and buffer Highway 83 with, but would also be complimentary. If we looked at a sports complex, in our home community of Carney, we have a sports complex that is sitting on a parcel that was platted at 29 acres. This is 30 acres. The whole sports complex is only sitting on half of it. And so just to give you an idea, if you wanted to compare it, this would be very comparable to Carney's and Carney only used half of that 30 acres. So this is some comparable size. But having those complimentary uses around a facility like this gives you guys as a community a great opportunity to have complimentary businesses there. So I've overlaid just a little bit here of the infrastructure on top of it, and then I'm going to peel that off and kind of zoom into it. So if we looked at that particular parcel, it's a parcel that has infrastructure sitting in Q Street and a little bit in Highway 83, and of course, a trunk main that we have along the outside of it. That trunk main that we see here, that sewer exists right here, and then it's stepped up along this east side, and it actually comes through our parcel in these back lots that we have drawn here. And so I'll just kind of zoom in and kind of talk through a little bit of the infrastructure. We have these open green space areas, which are having to be in the lower elevation areas, but we're going to utilize those as not only just open green space, but stormwater detention. So the impervious runoff that you have or gets created from the buildings, driveways, streets, and hard impervious areas will be conveyed in what we see as the green lines here, which go to regional detention. And regional detention cells for stormwater purposes are a benefit to the lots that you have to develop. A lot of times, you might visit a commercial site or development, and you'll see these open green space areas that it might be a depressed area. It looks like a mowed swale or maybe even have water in it. And that's where the stormwater runoff goes, but it becomes sacrificial areas that if I bought an acre and a half lot, I might be giving up 25% of that for stormwater detention. So none of these lots would have to have their own onsite stormwater detention. So meaning that if I bought a commercial lot out here, I'd have 100% of the zoning requirement and limitations as developable area. I wouldn't have to reserve or give up some of that ground that I bought for a commercial development and reserve it for stormwater detention. So because of the terrain that we have out here, we have the availability of these green spaces, stormwater detention. So primarily, the southern portion here of the property would convey stormwater to this one. I'll highlight sanitary sewer. This is the manhole that we would tap into. It's an existing manhole. We've had our eye on that manhole for a long time. It's pretty unattractive, but you know, hey, how can we get sewer from this trunk main west of Highway 83? And this trunk main is the one that we've been looking at for quite a while. Well, with this project, it allows us to take the sanitary sewer off of that and bring it through the right of way and extend it along the street here, which would be S, and get us to where we can get across Highway 83. The advantage of that and this project combined opens up the west side of Highway 83. We need sanitary sewer to serve this parcel, and we need it along these other platted right of ways and streets that are already there, so we know that that would be the pathway. We've been looking at this trunk main, and we've been looking at S right of way, but we just couldn't have, we didn't have the ability to get across this parcel. We now have the opportunity to plan for it and utilize it and not have to try and move it or work around it at a later date. So it's really worked out well that we've been able to do that. The red lines extend down here to the south to Q Street to serve these streets, and then along an east west street here. This may ultimately not be the exact block layout that you have, or it may not be the exact road matrix that you have. But as it takes time to evolve, there may be some tweaking, some shifting. What we need to show is feasibility. So this plan shows that we can extend sanitary sewer through this parcel. It shows that we can drain this parcel. Some other components, too, that I like to talk about is on Q Street, we have a 16 inch water main. And this allows us to have the redundancy of extending that water main up into this parcel and then get it also north and west of the intersection of the Q Street and Highway 83. We'll be able to take a 16 inch water main in this particular layout here, running up 16th Street, and then going west on S Street to the west side of 83 in the future. It allows us to also have an eight inch water main looping around the sports complex, which would serve the residential lots, but provide fire protection as well. If I continue to the north half of this parcel, I have a similar series of redundant infrastructures. I would take water and sewer out the cul-de-sac to the northeast. I'd take water and sewer out the cul-de-sac to the northwest. I have a green space out here, which I have as a green shaped area that would have the stormwater detention for this particular northwest portion and some of the sports complex lot for drainage. To the northeast, I would do some of the eastern portion of the sports complex area and the northeast infrastructure. So I don't very often have a parcel that I have the ability to put stormwater detention on all sides or three sides of the parcel, which means that you get to reduce the diameter of your stormwater pipe, reducing the infrastructure cost if I have regional cells that I could have on all sides of the property. So, you know, if I could say from a planning 101, this would be a great infrastructure model that I'd love to see on the rest of my developments wherever I go, but I don't often have that opportunity. The other thing on this infrastructure development plan, we kind of ghosted or lightly colored some of these other ones, T and U and some of those other ones, meaning that we wanted to look at this from a facial approach. How could we develop this project? So in summary, you'll see kind of highlighted here, I tried to screen the... So, in summary, you'll see kind of highlighted here, I tried to screen these streets back. The rightaway's still there, but they could be extended at any point in time. We would be stubbing infrastructure out to the west line. And so, our primary connection points would be what would be known as S Street in this location here and Sixteenth Street running south to Q, and we did bring another street that would be just east of Sixteenth and south to Q Street as well. These would be our three primary points of ingress, egress and circulation, but there are three other streets that also would allow us infrastructure and connectivity. Through this, we put together a cost estimate, a paving component consisting of thirty-six foot wide concrete curb and gutter with inlet stormwater. We also have detention cells and the associated underground piping, a combination of eight inches and sixteen inch fire and domestic water looping the site, sanitary sewer, we have a ten inch stub and we have eight inches around there. And then, we also put together a hike bike trail complex in scenario, which I, looking at this drawing, it doesn't show up as well as I'd like, so I'm going to just pop back a couple of slides here just to kind of show you where that's at. Shown in white here, it doesn't exist, but we were trying to utilize from a master planning that came out of the comp plan and also incorporated into this particular scenario. We would have a hike bike trail potential that could go all the way down this valley to Kelly Creek if the city of McCook desires to have that kind of connectivity. And I can't help but think of some of the circulation that you might have if you took Kelly Creek and you were able to extend it up that draw and bring it into the subdivision to a sports complex area. In doing so, from a, again, from a conceptual standpoint, we would bring it along this particular corridor and come into this trailhead here and we'd have circulation that could happen all the way around this particular sports complex with circulation that would come back down this side and then terminate back onto Q Street. And so, that is seen probably, and it doesn't just show up as gray on the screen. You can see the circulation here on this one here, that white loop that we have around there with some crosswalks that we have there and then a circulation pathway that we have going down to Q Street. The reason I went back to that is because I had a hike bike trail component here by which we are showing an eight-foot wide hike bike trail loop only within the property. So, if I looked at all the water, all the sewer, the paving, the hike bike trail components, we're looking at about ten and a half to eleven million if you built all of it all at one time. And we know that this would have a facial approach. So, one of the things before I go into that is I wanted to show you some other things that you guys have done with great planning. This was a two thousand nineteen light substandard study and so, this is known as Area Five, by which the light blue that we see on this map is the area that was within the corporate limits known as Area Five. The red boxes on the east side and the west side of this particular parcel were the areas in redevelopment five that were outside the corporate limits. And so, if you wouldn't have done that before, we wouldn't be at this stage today being able to move as fast as we've had to move to try and align with some of these grant funds that we have available. I want to fast forward to two thousand twenty-three which was last year. And so, this is the entire community's lights of standard areas. By state statutes, you're not allowed to go more than thirty-five percent for a city of the first class. So, on the top here, I thought it might be helpful in case you get asked or someone else asks. The two, the two thousand twenty-three studies said the corporate limits had basically thirty-five hundred acres. The light substandard areas within the corporate limits were about a thousand which equated to thirty percent. So, you're just under the thirty-five percent by five percent. So, by annexing what you guys just did, annexing that property and annexing all of that entire parcel as light substandard, it changed not, it was a one hundred twenty-seven point eight acres, it changed the thirty-five hundred to thirty-six six six two and it also increased that light substandard proportion as well. But we're still, even by doing that, we're still under the thirty-five percent. So, what I wanted to show you is that the thirty-two point five is where you're at, but you're still under the thirty-five percent. So, all things considered, great planning is, it's helpful to look at these things because sometimes we get going and we look at things and we go, did we understand what this meant in terms of light substandard? So, we don't have to go back and de-light anything to make this work. I guess that's probably the main thing. So, we also then looked at it from a facial standpoint. If we just did the minimum, just to try and get paving, water, sewer, street along the west side of our subdivision and one back out to Highway eighty-three and we tapped this sanitary sewer and brought it across here and built this detention cell, but probably didn't build this infrastructure, we'd done it as a ditch at this time, we'd probably be looking at about two and a half million to do this. And we've now got sewer to the west side of Highway eighty-three in conjunction with this. So, again, these are, this may not be the exact layout that we ultimately end up with, but it's sure a very solid, robust plan, I think. The other components that I'll have just in summary of this is that the residential development I spoke to a little bit that our comprehensive plan supported, that McCook needs housing. We have many demographics which we've had to go through and that which we won't show tonight. But this one hundred and twenty-six, twenty-seven acre parcel lends itself to residential and commercial opportunities as well as recreational. And we think that there should be some cohesiveness between the residential, tying in some hike bike trails, tying in availability to shop and to have things in close proximity. There are some areas that have dramatic drop-offs, but those allow opportunities for walkout basements, private season. This again is that, the areas that I was talking about which would be the yellow and the orange. From a commercial development standpoint, the commercial side of it, for the commercial segment, this development, one of the things to note is that there are several opportunities, it's in close proximity to Highway eighty-three. I would not underestimate the fact that you have this on the northern side of your town in close proximity to a high circulation point. And we, when we done the comprehensive plan, looked at traffic counts and what that Highway eighty-three corridor has and the Q Street, this is a great opportunity for commercial. But it's in close proximity to Highway eighty-three with points of transportation access to DOT driveway. Those streets that are platted already are break-in rightaways. I don't have to go to DOT and say, I need to apply for a break-in rightaway, those streets are already there. So, meaning that unlike some parcels that you have further south of this where businesses have key in, they'd have to apply for a single driveway permit. We already have breaks in rightways. Moreover, the Lumbyard that compromises two of those areas, this total of six acres, it also fronts Highway eighty-three and it joins that. The platted streets, both north and south sides of that area are excellent opportunities for developing the vast portions of those lots that are already owned that aren't developed. So, that's essentially it from the residential and the commercial development. I'm going to turn it over to Jason as I've been doing a monologue, but I couldn't help but just get really excited about the opportunity you have for circulation and the infrastructure development on this parcel. Jason?
Yeah. Good.
You probably won't top the manhole excitement.
Yeah. I don't have anything about sanitary sewers.
When I say I've been staring at a manhole, that was probably.
I really got nervous, everybody seemed so excited talking about the sewer. I'm just talking about the sports complex. Hey, here we go, the city of McCook is considered investing in a sports complex and recent literature indicates that there's a tremendous financial incentive. And most of the studies refer to this as sports tourism. And so, I'm just happy you kind of plant that seed and keep that in mind as we go through this, the idea of sports tourism. A development option that offers a much wider impact on the entire community. And so, we'll look a little bit about taxation and the benefit of this, but just think about that as well. Sports tourism related to hotel, motel, convenience stores, restaurant sales, and again, we'll look at some more of the numbers as we go through this. So, the last bullet point talks about an essential injection of funds. So, the idea of how can we present this, how can the city of McCook present this to attract teams from outside of the community? To attract teams from outside of the community. Last week, at the planning commission, we talked about geospatial advantage and we did want to let you know there's going to be a quiz at the end of this today, so geospatial advantage will come back into the mix. So, this mean what? McCook really does occupy a strategic position when you look at the teams and communities that you could tap into to attract teams. And so, we'll look at them as, but think about a geospatial advantage. We looked at where McCook is, if you have any family members, you're familiar with travel teams like elementary age or junior high age, the idea of travel sports is extremely popular. I know both of our boys play travel sports, Craig's, I mean, you're all over certain states. So, the radius that we see is a hundred mile radius in terms of travel sports, that's nothing. But again, look at the geospatial position of McCook. And if you note, we looked at Nebraska, Kansas and Colorado communities, there's, McCook is sitting in the middle of about three hundred thousand people. And so, we went through and all the green highlighted communities, they have travel sports now. So, just in terms of tapping into that, again, what does the research tell you, sports tourism? When people travel for those sports teams, they're going to the restaurants, they're staying in hotels, motels, it's a huge opportunity, it's a huge opportunity. We extended out the, maybe the elementary age or junior high age travel sports to the community college as well. So, McCook's community college is in Region Nine. And we thought about this idea of applying the same idea, this geospatial advantage. And look at this one from the community college perspective. There are five community colleges in Nebraska that are in the same conference, if you will. Kansas has two, Colorado five, Wyoming six, New Mexico one. McCook again is kind of dead center in the middle of all these communities with community colleges in that same conference. So, tapping into that geospatial advantage, location, location, location. So, the economic impact, tourism plays an important role in Nebraska's overall economy, is a tremendous revenue source for communities across the state. So, if you look at tourism dollars, twenty-nine point five percent spent on transportation or fuel, twenty-five point five on food services, nineteen point one on lodging, twelve point four on retail sales, seven point three percent on arts and recreation, five point four percent at food stores and on down the list. But that just kind of breaks apart the tourism dollars. That's where the state in its entirety. Examining economic data for Red Willow County, McCook would seem to support the benefit of a sports complex related to tourism. Data was collected from McCook along with seven peer communities in Nebraska. So, in the comprehensive plan, we looked at seven peer communities size-wise to McCook in Nebraska and for this study, we used the exact same seven communities. And the first measure we'll look at is correlation. This is a very simple statistics. Please note, the values range from negative one to zero to positive one. So, those are your values for correlation. It's simply a relationship between two or more variables. So, just a thumbnail sketch of this, as you get closer to negative one, what does that association mean? Meaning, as that one variable increases, the other decreases basically at the same rate. That's a negative relationship. On the flip side, the positive side of that, as one variable increases, another variable increases at the same rate. So, when we look at some of these relationships that we see here in Nebraska and for these eight communities, keep that in mind. So, the closer you get to a positive one, it's kind of a lockstep relationship. As that variable increases, the other variable comes with it, so to speak. So, the first one we looked at honestly is maybe statistically a little bit misleading because you're kind of this co-relationship. The first correlation we calculated was between accommodations, which is hotel motel, and food services and sales tax. So, it's no surprise as accommodations, the dollars involved increases, well, sales tax does as well. That's point nine three, close to your positive one, which is no surprise. As that accommodation number goes up, so does sales tax. Super, we all get that. How about this one? Another correlation we looked at is between arts, entertainment and recreation sales tax. Again, for these eight communities, here it is point five one. So, again, there's a very strong connection between sales tax and arts, entertainment, entertainment in this perspective, this sports complex and recreation and sales tax. So, a very positive trend with that one as well. How about this one? The third correlation we looked at is between accommodations and food services to arts, entertainment and recreation. So, again, now we're looking at hotel motel restaurants, the connection to arts, entertainment, recreation is point nine, positive point nine. So, there's a very strong relationship between arts, entertainment, sports complex, recreation and sales tax. An investment for McCook to consider. Additional travel and tourism data was gathered including travel spending, direct employment, direct earnings and tax receipts. How about this one? The correlation between direct travel spending and employment from McCook along with the other seven communities as well is positive point seven two. Direct travel spending and direct earnings is point seven seven, both very positive. And note with this one, it's kind of a little bit different twist, we're talking about job creation now. So, job creation being in the mix with employment. A very strong connection to consider. The last segment here, we're looking at funding opportunities and I'm going to flip through these quickly, then we'll go back. I would just have you note on the top left-hand corner, this is infrastructure. There are several grant opportunities and Craig could probably speak to this better than I can, but this is infrastructure. How about this one? Hike bike trails. There are several grant opportunities related just to hike bike trails that McCook can tap into. The last one, sports complex. So, there's three different sets, if you will, of different opportunities, infrastructure, hike bike trail. I mean, there are a lot of different opportunities to go after with this total project, if you will. So, I don't know, can you explain it better?
Yeah, I was going to say even on the infrastructure one, of course, you know.
Yeah, manholes, here we go, yeah.
Of course, the bottom of the three star just happens to be about sanitary sewer. So, you know, we have already as a firm been working with the city of McCook, looking at that extension across this property and the city has been approved for six hundred thousand dollars from the Nebraska Department of Environmental Energy for state revolving loan fund for the sanitary sewer extension. So, as a component of that, that is already in place and has the availability to go from the east side across this property to the west side of Highway eighty-three. And so, above that are other NDE opportunities, municipal funds that are available, which is the reason that we're under this extremely tight timeframe. There's four million dollars of MIAP, municipal infrastructure aid program dollars that are available out there that we are applying for. The cutoff for that is at the end of this month. And so, that's another reason why we're here. We're trying to get a lot of these opportunities so that we have a redevelopment plan which we have before you tonight so that we can utilize some of these available funds for grants that are available if we apply. And so, this is a very unique, the MIAP program for that four mil, it's a very unique program. It's going to be for redevelopment projects. And so, it limits, it's not every community is going to be applying for this. So, we think there's a possibility of that particular resource. We have, even Park, you talked about the trails. One of the things I've been talking about with the Nebraska Even Parks Trails Program, I did mention that for our estimates, we use an eight-foot wide trail a lot of times. If it's Even Parks, they'll only increase that minimum width to ten foot, some minor adjustments that will have to be made, but there are grant funds available and some of those have different contributions that they have, like local match might be twenty percent, it might be a fifty-fifty, but most of these ones here are twenty-twenty or twenty, eighty-twenty, so twenty percent match. The city CCDFF is an opportunity, we've worked with other communities for this and have applied for that and gotten dollars. There is a minimum grant of fifteen thousand, the maximum is anywhere between three seventy-five and half a mil. So, another great source for as you look at that thirty-acre sports complex lot and what you might looking at that. It does require a one-to-one local cost share match. So, I look at this slide and we look at, you know, as Nate shared, we have been on this journey for a very short time, but our end goal is to create, we had a blank piece of paper six weeks ago, five weeks ago, and we're here today. By no accident, if we weren't involved and had the fortunate ability to be involved in your light substandard studies, your comprehensive plan, that is a long ways down the road, it would have been virtually impossible even before you tonight with this. But here we are in October, planning commission we had last week, city council this week. The grant applications are due the end of this month, so the first of November for the MIAP project in November also. The city, as Nate has already talked about here, would go out for RFQs at that particular point in time for AID terms to look at a development project on the sports complex lot. And the ultimate goal here again is to try and hit another deadline, which is that to have those contracts in place by the end of this year. by the end of this year so that you could use your ARPA funds for that design component. So, the city of McCook and staff and Nate and everybody has done a great job of saying, hey, here are all these things out here, but they have a lot of short deadlines, and they're all coming up very quickly. And so, the redevelopment plan is a great tool. I would summarize by saying that it serves this property well in terms of giving you a lot of ideas, and they may not be the ideas that end up going forward holistically, but from a feasibility standpoint, this is a great roadmap. And so, having said that, that was a condensed way to go through this whole thing. And it may not seem condensed, but if we read this and I threw it page by page, it would take us a little while. So, any questions or comments that you have?
I don't have questions, but I don't want to be the first. I like being first. Can you go back to that picture?
Sure.
Please.
There's one of them.
Okay. What, Craig, is this pretty little blue squiggly line represent?
Oh, sure, yep, that's flood plain. It's in the draw out there. So, your sanitary sewer that you already have out there is in that flood plain.
Okay. Nice take, wait a minute, next question. Has the NRD weighed in on any of this? Or had the point, would we ask the NRD?
We are out of the flood plain for this development. All of this property is out.
Okay. So, when we develop all these streets and do our parking lots and the water runoff, we've got the dam on West Third Street. Is that any concern with the city and all these plans that were anted? That we annexed?
So, those green space areas that I have here, I'm just going to go to something that kind of shows that a little bit better here.
Well, we had a little choke and leak this year, and I went down West Third to watch that water just blowing out of that discharge pipe. So, we get those every now and then, but I understand the.
Yep, these green space areas, conventional development, like say, the city of McCook and not only just McCook, but many other communities would build and develop streets, parking lots, and paving, but not have anything other than what can capture a particular low storm event. So, like a lot of times, infrastructure within a street would only capture a five-year storm, rarely a 10-year storm. So, the reason that development standard practices are so we don't flood our downstream neighbors is that we capture that runoff in detention cells and release them at the same rate that they were up to a 10-year storm. So, if I have a 10-year storm event, then I'm taking them in these particular green space areas, and I'm detaining it, but releasing it at the same rate that it was now, as which is agricultural use. So that I'm not, what's going to happen is I don't increase my peak runoff. So, I don't have a surge, but the duration that it will drain out of these detention cells lasts longer, but I've not then increased downstream neighbors' high water elevation. So, to your question, the NRD, yes, good catch, that is where the flood plain is. And we can build, we can build hike bike trails and flood plains, we can obviously build the sanitary sewer. And this whole property development is not even within a flood plain. So, I don't have to worry about flood insurance or those kind of things.
So, R, S, and T Street, which is so weird to say, R, S, and T, it's really weird. S Street is where we get all sexified about the sewer and all that advanced development, which I get.
I like what he's saying there.
Yeah, it's cool, it's very cool. Do we need to do any advanced work with R and T? Not necessarily paving, but if they're looking at to allow our neighbors on both sides of R and T to say, okay, we need this now? Do we need to do any of that at this point, or is that?
I'll use this example here. I've denoted these as future, because I know that this one, if I'm going to bring sewer, I probably want to utilize that as my, and it does happen to kind of tie in nicely through the southwest corner of the sports complex and gives us good circulation. But at any point in what I looked at for that 10 and a half to 11 million, I was looking at all of these streets as well. So, by peeling those connectivity off, you, as a community, might decide that, hey, we don't need to do this particular street, vacate it and just provide utilities across it. But for the sake of evaluation, since it is plotted right away, I need to account for it in our cost estimate. But it may be something that you might not see that I need that much circulation. But from a commercial development, you know, when I look at the east side of this backyard area here, this area is undeveloped. If I brought a street through here, for example, I'm not saying whose ground is what, but if I brought a street through here, it does give me more developable options on this, as well as bringing this through already developed lots. May not be as desirable, but if I brought a street here, it sure does open up this year. So, as you go forward, as developments come before both the planning commission and council and city staff, you may be in some of these streets not as desirable to ever do, or maybe at this point in time, but there's some minimum circulations that we need to address.
A project like this, especially housing, commercial, is going to require a lot of water. Can our west water tower handle this, or the pumping, but are we looking at?
We're not looking at a booster pump for this.
Okay. So, what we currently have with the west water tower can handle the expanded usage?
When we've looked at development west of this Highway eighty-three corridor, because we're going up in elevation, we've had to look at booster pump options as we've looked at, you know, anywhere north, northwest, west-south of Q Street. This particular area, we wouldn't have to be booking it down. Another advantage.
They're all extending water and improving streams.
Yes. Yeah, because there's very small water infrastructure in Highway eighty-three. And so, when I looked at bringing a 16-inch water main up here and bringing it back, it gives me not only redundant circulation from a dead-end loop, essentially with a small diameter, it might be six-inch that's going up that, but it also then allows me to have redundant flow, but then have the ability to extend that 16-inch and serve. I mean, I have lots of dreams about what I could see this be, but I'll just stay on the 127-acre parcel.
I bet you're driving your bike on our biking trail.
Yes, I would be more than happy to be one of the first people doing that, absolutely.
Okay, Rhonda, you hear that back there?
That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much for answering those questions.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Craig, the sports area in the middle, this is like a hub of a wheel, right?
Yeah, it really is.
And that's what you designed it for, so everything ready is around this. This is the focus point of this area, right then?
That was the exact intent. You know, I would tell you that when we were given the task of looking at this particular parcel, that was one of the goals. We could put it in a lot of different locations, but any time that I can encapsulate infrastructure that I know has to go around it, and I can get a dual bank for my buck, meaning if I put a street around it and I can put locks around it, it reduces the costs. But yes, that was the focus point of this particular redevelopment plan.
Awesome, awesome. It's exciting.
Any questions or comments from the public on this item?
Y'all going to be that quiet, really?
All right. I recommend where you convene there.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I'll make one. I hope you're cheering for the carry to reconvene as the city council.
I'll second that.
We need a discussion. All those in favor vote yep, post yea. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast Jane. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve resolution number 2024-28, approving a redevelopment plan entitled redevelopment plan for the Walters Multi-Use Redevelopment Project for attractive land located in the northwest quarter of Sector Nineteen, Township Three, North Ring Twenty-Nine, west of the Six PM Red Willow County, Nebraska.
So moved. I'll second that.
All those in favor vote yep, post yea. I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast Jane. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved in one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda.
I have nothing to add, you're welcome.
Okay. Stan? No? Anybody from the public?
That's good. Like kids upstairs. I move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor vote yep, post yea. I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast Jane. Okay, move on to the regular agenda. And I see several people here from McCook Community Foundation, and they're here for a grant in the amount of $29,289.22 that was awarded to the city for the purpose of making the McCook Aquatic Park admission free to the public during its opening in the summer.
This could be the special.
Everybody, everybody look at Rhonda.
I don't have any, so Sarah, unbeknownst to her, we don't have her on with sports. You already have the money, they can't do any bad things.
We just want to thank you.
Well, and I'm hoping Sarah come up, she doesn't know, because I was like, I don't have a check or any, but Sarah, for those that, I don't think they come up to the polls.
Sure.
Hmm, I don't know if they did. Anyway, you can tell this was sitting there because of the water she was on it. As the people went through it, so thank you to Sarah for ordering it. Yeah, just wanted, I don't know, maybe, can you talk about it?
Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate it. I think that for the city of McCook, the swimming pool project is representative of a lot of work and effort by a number of different community members, and everybody kind of pulling their weight and adding their expertise and talents and gifts to make sure that it was a success. And the McCook Community Foundation Fund obviously put their neck on the line as well too to make sure that the inaugural season was a success. Not only did they go ahead and assist with the entry fee over the course of the summer, it's about a month and a half, month, I can't remember exactly how that worked, but also they helped assist with paying for lifeguard training as well too. Without those two components, you don't have a swimming pool or have the same kind of impact that you had this year. I can tell you from the lifeguard perspective, that was very tricky this year, and without their assistance, we probably wouldn't have had nearly as many lifeguards, because it's an expensive proposition that in the past, our lifeguards depend on front themselves. And so, that was a huge help. They actually went over what they actually had pledged right off the bat. They didn't squabble or complain or, you know, say anything about it. They said, yeah, what do we need to do to make sure that we take care of that entry fee funding for this entire year? And we really appreciated it. I know on our end, it was great to see all the kids up there swimming. I can't tell you the exact numbers, Kyle and Tara have those numbers, but I think we had 700 this Thursday. And all summer long, I think we had those kinds of numbers, maybe not quite to that extent, but the amount of people that were able to go ahead and benefit from the gift, it was a great way to open it up. And for those people that struggle paying for those kinds of activities, it was great for them to have the opportunity. This year, we will be bringing a fee proposal, a schedule proposal to the council for consideration. We're going to try to continue to make sure that what we charge is going to be less than what we've seen in other communities, but we also need to make sure that we're covering our costs as best as we can, that we're able to completely cover our costs. But this year, it was nice not to have to worry about that with everything else that we had going on. It was crazy trying to get this thing up and running and not having to worry about that. It was fantastic from an administration standpoint. So, can't say enough good things about what they've done. The community foundation, they're always here to try to promote the best of the best activities that we have. And if it's not, you know, something that's always in the limelight, they're still there trying to figure out a way to make sure that they're prioritized. But it was cool to get their assistance and help on this, so appreciate that, y'all.
Maybe I have a couple hands in my heart and do a hand if you're sure that the empty part.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Just a good.
And I nod at the pictures, I'm covered in stuff.
Yeah, we're very young.
Okay, which, actually, you came to the pool.
I did.
Darcy came to the pool this summer. I'm, no, I'm covered in drywall dust.
You're on the committee.
Good sign.
You gotta be used to that. Portland is in front. Portland, I know. Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
The guy who does track.
Okay, next item is an update regarding the sports complex project that we needed.
Well, just really quickly, just so the council is aware, we had our first sports complex committee meeting this past week. We were able to finally sit down with them. Craig and Jason were actually in attendance via Zoom as well too. So, they were able to answer some questions and take questions and hear kind of some of the thoughts of the sports complex committee when they met. What we are in the process of doing right now, we kind of alluded to this, we are working on our RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. We want to bring this to the council for approval on Friday at the special meeting. So, that way, we can get this published as quickly as possible. We've already had some design firms that have shown interest. We want to try to make sure that we get those out to those people specifically, but also we want to make sure that any firms that are interested, they're able to see the publication and submit their RFQ. Our hope is to publish, well, we are going to publish on three successive weeks, starting on the 25th, and the next two Fridays in November. We're going to ask the RFQs be sent back to the city of McCook. We're hoping November 14, that's kind of the date. Early kind of got a little jumbled because of Thanksgiving. So, originally, we were thinking, I think, with the timeline that you saw, we could maybe do the interviews at the end of November. Well, that's going to be Thanksgiving week, so we need to do it the week before that. So, we're looking somewhere on the 19th, 20th, 21st, or 22nd for interviews. And then, I want to try to bring this back to the council then with a selection from the committee at the December 2nd meeting. And then, that gives us some time for Nate and myself and whoever it is that's serving as council or the selected committee to come up with a contract. I'd like to try to get that contract entered into by December 16th, which is the second meeting in December. If we can't, we'll have some time to have a special meeting. I want to try to avoid that just because of Christmas, you know? If we try to avoid, try to do too much of this stuff during Christmas, then preferable. And then, the nice thing about doing that with the timeframe that we're discussing right now is that we'd be able to use those ARPA funds to help pay for the fee of designer. We've got to have those funds obligated by the end of this year, and that's been kind of our goal, is to use those funds for the design fees. Because of the closing on the property and whatnot, getting moved back a little bit, it kind of has crunched our timeline a tad bit, but I think it's feasible. So, I can't think of anything else. We talked about getting the MIAP grant sent in by November 1st. David Hall with Miller and Associates is helping us out with that right now. That was within the scope of the work that the council approved to be done by Miller and Associates here a few months ago. That MIAP grant is going to tie that redevelopment plan, the fact that that property's been voluntary annexed, and then everything else we need to, to make sure that we are meeting the qualifications. There's a lot of stuff going on. We're, you know, looking at all the different ground. you know, looking at all the different grant opportunities, trying to make sure that we're not missing out on stuff. A lot of the things that were included in here, those are already grant opportunities that we've looked at and recognized as potential grant opportunities for this project. One of the things I did want to note, had we gone to the west and had we gone through the, uh, processes was being proposed, we wouldn't be eligible for those grant opportunities. By us taking the lead and building this out ourselves, that makes us eligible for these grant opportunities. So that's one of the nice things about going this route in addition to everything else that we talked about. So, um, maybe we got anything else?
That's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you for getting as much done as you have. I knew you guys had been working full speed ahead. Thank you, Tara, for all the work you've been doing for the grants.
Yes, good job with the grants.
You, you have been very, very busy and we appreciate that a lot. All the money we can get that way makes us a sweetheart. Okay, so that's good. Okay, the grants. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the property located in eleven oh seven, West Fourth Street.
Well, everything's been so positive and now we're going to talk about a nuisance. But, uh, but this has been, actually this is a positive now too. It's just, we're asking you what direction you want to go with this property. Just kind of going back in time. This is a property that burned, I want to say in 2019. Does that sound about right, Mark? Twenty nineteen, that property burned. It was declared unsafe. Uh, we had to go through a number of steps to get that, that building removed. It was a residential structure removed from the premises. Uh, we used ACE funds to help pay for that. Uh, obviously we've talked about this ad nauseam, but when we use either ACE funds or tax dollars to remove these properties, that's an opportunity cost loss to us because we don't think you use that for something else, which is a struggle. I like the people to take care of their home problems, but that's neither here nor there. But the one thing I wanted to note was we've got fifteen thousand dollars tied into this property right now. And, uh, similar to what we were talking about with East First Street and the Baker property, you know, there are people that are interested in that lot. However, we've got, you know, money tied into that. And so if we are to go ahead and either take sealed bids or auction it off, whatever the case may be, there's a chance that you're going to see us lose some funds or lose out on the opportunity of, of collecting on that entire amount. Um, what we would probably do is we would go ahead and, uh, you know, use either of those two alternatives, hopefully to go ahead and build an infill house on that lot. But it's always hard to get people attracted to infill lots. Uh, as you can see today, you know, you look at the other projects we have going on at North Point, that's going to be kind of the priority for people that are wanting to build and develop. So infill lots are really difficult. Uh, and so I know we've talked with Habitat for Humanity and, and, uh, I know that they were interested in that lot. I know that there are property owners that are adjacent to it that are interested in that lot. It's just a struggle because that's fifteen thousand dollars potentially that could be, you know, eaten, you know, and I just don't like that. Um, we're at a point right now where I don't know if we've gotten the sheriff's team back yet. I don't know if Kevin's got it.
They've got it.
Okay. So you haven't got it? So Nate doesn't have it yet. So, but once he gets it, I mean, it's going to be our property. And then the question is, what do you guys want? One of the downsides is that we've got to maintain it, make sure that we're keeping it. So it's not a nuisance, but that means our guys are not focusing on the things that we should be focusing on, which are the parks and the right of ways we're contracted to take care of and whatnot. And it's just one more headache that becomes an issue for us. So that's one, I guess, one point for unloading it. Um, but I guess I just wanted to discuss it. I've had some property owners in that area that thought that we owned it. We didn't own it. Um, but now, once that, that deed is signed off on and recorded, it's going to be ours. And once we do all it, then we're going to have to figure out what we want to do with it. I didn't touch on any.
No, I'm glad this is on there tonight. I'll, I will follow up with the sheriff's office. I know they're extremely understaffed and have big, bigger worries right now over there. So I haven't been that's true.
So the lot has water and sewer and all of that there already, right? Amanda, how would that work for an infill lot?
I mean, I think it would be great.
It would be great?
Yeah. I would much rather, for I guess, from like a housing standpoint, see somebody put an infill housing, whether it be Habitat or EDC or a private individual than a lodge or something, you know, utilize the existing infrastructure we have, would you agree with that?
Yes.
That's the question I have for you. With your experiences in the last couple of years and all the contacts you have, would this be a relatively easy project for somebody to come in and do?
Um, I haven't really looked at the lot itself that much. I mean, knowing the lots over there is probably fairly narrow, deep, I'm assuming, like a lot of the lots in the center, obviously. Um, I mean.
I think it's a fifty by one forty lot. So by today's standards, it's very narrow.
But it is so plenty usable. It's just a matter of buying the right person. I think it would probably have to be somebody locally that would be interested in it if it wasn't, you know.
I don't know about you guys, but I have a house on it.
Well, that's the same thing over on East First Street too. I mean, they want to buy it for a green space. What I'm thinking, no.
No more green spaces. Don't pay taxes.
But the, the question is, we've got fifteen thousand dollars against this house on West Fourth Street.
You'd have to be willing to weigh it.
What's that?
You're not going to get the full fifteen thousand dollars out of it.
Oh.
An inf, an infill lot. Five thousand seventy-five hundred dollars is probably what you're looking at.
Think you get half of it?
Fairly enough.
Fair enough.
But that's, that's assuming that somebody wants it.
Then we're getting some of these taxes back on it as well. That's, that's the big thing.
That's the big.
But on an unapproved lot.
I mean, you could put some, you know.
So that's why I'm sitting here and say, you have to build within a certain period of time, give them a couple of years, you know, those are things that we can look at.
That's why I think Habitat would be a great option.
The hard part, one of the difficulties that we have is trying to direct it to one specific.
Right.
Entity. It's difficult because.
With the bidding.
Yeah. Unless it's under five thousand dollars in value, if it's under five thousand dollars in value, it could sell to whoever we want. I, I should, I think that's.
You can have it. No, it'd be fair market value.
Yeah, market analysis.
Yeah, market analysis from real estate. Okay.
And again, I mean, anything's better than nothing, but at the same time, it'd be nice for somebody to build a house there.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on, council comments. Anyone have any comments?
Um, Kyle?
The swimming pool, the high school football team helped play the side.
Yes, they did.
Was there city employees also?
Yes.
I'd just like to compliment the high school football team and the city employees for doing it. It looks awesome. I drive by there. It's beautiful.
It was definitely a team effort and I think both sides had fun doing it.
So I want, thank, thank you guys and thank the high school football team too.
Okay. An executive session may be held upon a majority vote of council for the protection of public interest for a strategy session with respect to pending litigation, property located in eleven eleven East H Street, Cindy and Ron Saban at six fifty P M.
Motion?
Yes.
Second?